I would like to mention that our, it seems like our live stream is, we're having technical difficulties. It won't be livestreamed today, but it is being recorded and it will be posted on the website tomorrow. Item 1.1, call to order.
Mr. Bibb?
Here.
Mrs. Jonas?
Here.
Dr. Resmussen?
Here.
Mrs. Stewart?
Here.
Mrs. Hausfeld?
Here. Item 1.2, roll call.
Oh, sorry that was.
Item 1.3, we're gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1.4, safety briefing. I want to note the emergency exits. Most of you know the door that you came in. There's a door behind you and a door behind us. Item 2.1, motion to adopt agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Mrs. Jonas?
Yes.
Dr. Resmussen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausfeld?
Yes. Item 3.1, approval of minutes of budget hearing, organizational meeting, January 6, 2022. We're going to approve the minutes on items 3.1 through 3.4 as presented.
So moved.
One second. Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Mrs. Jonas?
Yes.
Dr. Resmussen?
Yes.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausfeld?
Yes. Item 4.0, correspondence and procedure for public commentary.
I, I don't have any correspondence, Mrs. Hausfeld, thank you.
No correspondence from the treasurer as well.
Item 4.2, procedures for public commentary. The board is committed to conducting its meetings in a productive and efficient manner to assure that the meeting is completed in a reasonable amount of time while also recognizing the importance of fair and adequate opportunity for public input. In order to conduct an orderly and fair representation of expression, the board will allow a period of public participation at every regular board meeting. Public participation will be a total of 30 minutes. Each speaker will have three minutes of time limit. If there are more than 10 speakers, individual times will be adjusted down to fit within the 30 minutes. The board does not discriminate based on individual content of the speech or viewpoint of the speaker. If several people wish to speak on the same topic, the time limit may be adjusted at the president's discretion. Those individuals interested in speaking during the public comment need to fill out the public participation sheet located at the entrance of the room. The president will call each speaker to the podium when it is time to speak. While speaking, please remember that comments should be addressed to the board as a whole. Item 5.0, candidate for graduation.
I'd like to ask Mr. Fender, please to come to the podium. We have a special announcement this evening.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you all for being here. We have, as Mr. Prell said, a special announcement tonight. We have one of our very own graduating early, going to play football at Indiana University. So I know my predecessor, Mr. Fellows, is extremely excited about that, is a proud IU alum. And I come from an IU family as well, so I'm pretty darn excited too. Brody Foley is the student's name. He's an excellent young man. High character, individual who demonstrated skill and dedication to his craft in football, as well as maintaining a stellar academic record during his time at Anderson High School. And the fact that he's able to finish four years' worth of graduation requirements and three and a half to be done early to enroll. And the reason for that is to enroll early at Indiana University so that he can begin his academic and athletic pursuits there as well. We're extraordinarily proud of Brody and superintendent recommends the board approve an early graduation for Brody Foley.
We make a motion to approve the granting of the high school diploma to Brody Foley.
A second.
Mrs. Hausfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Mrs. Jonas?
Yes.
Dr. Resmussen?
Yes, congratulations.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Well, thank you all very much.
Yeah. Item 6.0, commendations and recognitions.
Good evening. I am here to actually have Kyle come back up. I'm also, I have some friends with me this evening that I would like to present. The superintendent, I would like to recognize representatives who presented at our Science and Innovation Expo on January 22nd. Adam Samuels, he's often the man behind the curtain if you'd like to come on up. He helps us quite a bit in the world of technology, but he has also been very student-centered and student-focused in making sure that we have opportunities for our students beyond the classroom. And it has been kind of a passion and brainchild of his and Emily Dorsey and Corey Mullins to really offer some opportunities beyond a typical science fair. So we had over 300 students participate this year. We have approximately 150 that were also, they made it to the finalists. They were finalists for the Regional Science and Engineering Expo at the University of Cincinnati. That could then lead to State Science Day in Columbus in May. So I was gonna have Adam come up and share a little bit about his journey.
Thanks, Kim. So my name's Adam Samuels. I'm the Technology Teaching and Learning Support Specialist in the district. And a little bit about the Science and Innovation Expo. Basically, at one point, back in kind of the early mid-'90s, we had a traditional science fair. And you can go to the next slide here, Judy, thanks. You can go, one more. So kind of early '90s to really 2017, we always had a traditional science fair like many school districts do. And for us, I think one thing we do really well as a district is we look at things we have in place that are successful and say, you know, what's the next step? How can we expand opportunities to our students? So for us, the science fair became the Science and Innovation Expo. And basically, we just took our traditional science fair, but we combined it to create more opportunities for students. Our science fair used to be for grades five through 12. Our innovation expo that we added on to the science fair event is for K through 12. So it just gave entry into a lot of different grade levels and kind of expanded some of the learning opportunities for our students as well. So if you can go to the next slide. So kind of how we were set up in September, we kind of shared a little bit about this event. As we get into November, we've added an event for the past four years as well called Spark Night. And Spark Night, basically, it's, I think it's one of my favorite nights of the year. It's an opportunity where all of our elementary students are invited to Turpin High School one night or Anderson High School, they can go to either. Many go to both because they have such a good time. But basically, what we do is we have our high school students, thanks to Mrs. Dorsey and Mrs. Mullins, they help support the students in organizing these projects that students come up with. And they're basically hands-on, engaging examples of what maybe an elementary student might create as a project. So on those nights, you have a ton of high school students, hundreds of them, working with hundreds of our elementary students. And just helping our elementary students kind of, we call it Spark Night because we feel our elementary students, it sparks creativity and really helps them figure out what kind of project they might create. So both of those nights this year, we had close to around 300 families, combined to 10. Like I said, many came to both nights because they had such a good time. So just an all-around fun night, great way to connect our high school to our elementary students, great way to bring our community in, and that to me is what, you know, our learning's all about. So if we go to the next slide, kind of showing an example of what our Spark Nights look like. And I would encourage you, if you've never been, to definitely join us sometime. Completely free event, just great hands-on, good energy. So we had everything from our robotics students at Anderson High School, allowing students to try different robotics activities from coding to all sorts of different goals that were set up by the students. And then we also had, these are little like coding caterpillars so students could kind of predict and create algorithms or step-by-step instructions for how that caterpillar would move through a maze. So again, it's an awesome opportunity, high school students working with elementary students, and it's a blast to watch the interactions, so. So kind of taking you up to our main event is our Science and Innovation Expo like I was talking about. And this event, every single year, has brought anywhere from 300 to 500 students to present. And, you know, I think we're one of the few districts that have something like this, and I think it's a testament to the fact that between our community and between our staff, it's just everybody's all hands on deck when it comes to supporting learning for our students. And that's huge, you don't find that everywhere. And Forest Hills is a special place because of that. So kind of taking you in the doors of that, what it looks like. So our innovation expo is a little more informal, grades K through 12 can sign up. And we have community judges who come in for the science expo and for the innovation expo. Both of these events are happening on the same day at Nagel Middle School. And for the innovation expo, students come up with any types of projects that are STEM or STEAM-based, so science, technology, engineering, arts, mathematics. Anything that meets that category, they come up with an idea, they create, and then they share out. And I think, you know, what better than to give a platform for students to present to the entire community and share out their ideas and really a very authentic audience. So in that slide, actually, if you want to go back one, if it lets you, there you go. So kind of a couple of examples, we had 11th graders a couple of years ago that they took an RC boat and they took all the motors out of it and they put hydrogen-powered fuel cells in it, so they wanted to see if they could power the boat that way. We had a student who wanted to learn to be a DJ, so she took that on and DJed Ghostbusters the entire time for the innovation expo. So that was, added a nice little bit of pizzazz to our event. We had students learning more about physics concepts through different mazes that they created, where they cut different types of wood and represented those concepts through that. But just a wide range of projects, and it's so cool when you go there because you see everything from coding to robotics to these types of projects to art-based creations. Just anything you can think of, it's there, and it's hundreds of students, and the energy's just great. So for a science expo on the next slide, or sorry, one more for innovation expo. So this was a great project by Nagel Middle School. They had a couple of students and Mr. Varner worked together to create, they wanted to create like a topographic map. And so they wanted to show how runoff and different types of erosion and weather patterns can create, change landforms. So they created this sandbox and they worked with a couple of different universities when they ran into some different issues. And they created this sandbox where basically if you hold your hand over it, it simulates rain and then it changes the colors of the map based on the elevations. So that was all created by students partnering up with universities, partnering up with myself and the technology department. So just, you know, for them to get involved and to figure out who do I need to, you know, contact to get support with this? Who's the best people to bring in to help with this? That's the kind of learning that, you know, I think best simulates a real career environment. And then up top, from our engineering class, Mr. Glazer, some of his students created what are called automata, and it's basically simple machines and demonstrating how those work. So just a lot of really cool projects that you see along the way. Moving to our next slide, for our science expo, rather than walking through a couple of demonstrations, we're very fortunate to have Sia and Sir Patel here today, so if you want to come up and join us. And they brought their projects, and they're just gonna share a little bit more about what their project was all about, and yeah.
So we did our science project on how magnetic fields affect brine shrimp. So we were like interested in this because we were interested in how like magnets work and how exactly they affect microorganisms. And if you own fish, you probably, you probably might notice that like people grow brine shrimp to then feed to their fish because they're good protein for their fish. And if you want to grow brine shrimp, you have to like submerge them in water and then let them grow like that, except in the end, not all of them grow. So we thought that maybe if we submerged brine shrimp in water and then exposed them to magnetic fields, maybe they would, it would increase the rate of hatching.
Yeah, so we use, mainly we use household items. The only thing we had to buy was the pump, the air pump. And so our, I pumped it, well, like you said, once per day when we submerged the brine shrimp in water. The magnets, it did increase the hatching rate.
So for our procedure, we had two empty pot bottles and we filled them with warm water and we tied it up on a stick. And then we had like two support aims to support that stick. And then one side was exposed to magnetic fields. And then when we submerged the brine shrimp in there, we tracked the process of growth every 12 hours and we kept them submerged for 48 hours. And we noticed that there was a higher like rate of activity and hatching on the side that was exposed to magnets. So if we could boost the rate of hatching with magnets, then what else could we do with the magnets? We could like expose fish eggs or other microorganisms and see if the magnets also affect those eggs and the rate of hatching.
Awesome. Thank you, big round of applause for Sia and Sir Patel. Their projects are just, you know, one of many examples of just the type of learning that goes on with this event. Moving to our next slide. Basically, I think when you look at the project they did or any of these projects, whether it be from our science expo, renovation expo, they're career-connected. They're, the things that we hope our students, the skills we hope they have when they're moving on to college, to their careers, whatever it may be. And I think one of the biggest things is, you know, when you take students and you put them in a situation where they're solving ill-defined problems that aren't just straightforward answers, that's, to me, the crossroads where the most critical thinking happens in a lot of collaboration and a lot of working through unknown situations. So that, I think, we accomplished through this event. I think we accomplished it on a very large scale. And like I said, not many districts have this, so we feel fortunate that. We're blessed with a team like Mrs. Dorsey, like Mrs. Mullins, and many others who helped make this event what it can be, and I hope it continues for many years to come. So last slide here, just kind of an overview of where we've kind of been since we started this in the 2018-19 year, but almost 1,000 projects, over 1,500 students have participated, 283 families this year at our Spark Nights between Anderson and Turpin. And you can kind of see our breakdown of projects this year from science expo projects to innovation expo. So with that being said, we hope, you know, you guys will, at some point, if you've never been out to our expo or to our Spark Night, it's open to everybody in the community, you don't have to have a student. So, you know, we'd hope you'd join us because it's just, it's an awesome day, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. If I could get your pictures, Sia and Sir, I want to get your pictures too, also. I do want to recognize too that while Mr. Fender is here, we did also, our students are very successful in the classroom and outside of the classroom, so getting kids to stay after school today was difficult. I'm very grateful that you took time to be here. I'm glad you took time to listen. Having our students come and share with us is important as they are the reason that we are here tonight, so.
So we're gonna hear some more this evening about the things, the connections that take place outside of our classrooms and the many things that we have in our district that support what's happening in classrooms, that'll come with the foundation update. I want to thank both of you. The level of sophistication in your presentation, as well as what you are studying and the way that you present that to your peers, as well as to our entire community, it represents all that is good in Forest Hills. And I greatly appreciate the fact that you're with us tonight and all the individuals who participated in the innovation and the expo, I thank you. Certainly the judges who participate from our community, extending our partnerships and making sure that people who are in our community that have interest in our schools have the opportunity to engage with our students and provide expertise, even in the way that they judge and ask questions and interact with our students. It is a big circle, you've closed it tonight, you make it look so simple and so easy. So thank you both, I appreciate it, well done, thank you.
Yeah. Emily, if you want to come up also. So yeah, we have to recognize Ms. Dorsey as well, she's been a huge support for all of us.
Mrs. Hausfeld, while we're transitioning into 7.1, wellness update, we have a few very exciting things that are happening in the school district regarding wellness, so want to update the board and members of the community on that. It's all good, they are way more important than me. So QPR training is something that we have extended beyond our staff in our school district to parents and community members who have interest. And QPR, if you do not know, is question, persuade, and refer. And we have gatekeeper training that's taking place in our school district night, in our school district right now for suicide prevention. And it is a one, sometimes one to two-hour educational program that is designed to teach lay and professional gatekeepers, if you will, the warning signs of suicide, crisis, and how to respond. Gatekeepers can include anyone who is strategically positioned to recognize, refer someone at risk of suis, and refer someone of risk for suicide. These can be parents, these can be friends, neighbors, teachers, coaches, caseworkers, police officers, fire department folks, anyone who is close to kids. And the process pretty much follows three very simple steps. We need to question the individual's desire or intent regarding suicide, if that became an issue. We need to persuade the person to seek and accept help, either from someone that they love, someone that they know, or an agency or a partner that we have in our school district, certainly someone within our schools who can assist them. And then refer the person, as I just said, to appropriate resources. So trainees receive a QPR booklet, they also receive a wallet card as a review and resource tool that includes local referral resources. And so the training is delivered in person by certified, qualified, question, persuade, and refer keeper instructors. We have it in two ways in our school district, in-person and virtual. Couple of weeks ago, we sent out requests for individuals who would have interest, parents who would have interest in QPR gatekeeper training. We had 160 slots available for our community to come and participate. Within three hours, those slots were completely full. We have added another 160 slots available for individuals who would like to participate. This is awesome, that we have the ability to increase the awareness and the ability for not only individuals in schools, but individuals in homes and individuals in our community to be able to assist kids who may be struggling. It also advances not only to kids when you get the training, but in your association with other individuals that are in your life. So this is a very good tool that we're bringing in our school, that we've brought into our schools. Our entire staff has been trained in this, and now we are expanding that to a larger network because we've learned over the last few months, years, that increasing the partnerships with our community, advancing the conversation beyond the walls of the school is something that is going to be good for our children and for our community. So I'm very happy that we have QPR in place right now. If you have interest, if you would like to participate, receive training, you may not be in the first 160 or the second 320, but you will definitely be involved and you will receive training because we are not going to stop until people stop knocking on the door, which hopefully will be never. So we will consistently offer this opportunity. I would also note that QPR training can advance to another level. So once QPR is, people are trained in that, there can be specialized modules for schools, teachers, classrooms, and for other individuals who have interest to actually become gatekeeper trainers of others. So expanding that knowledge is a great thing that's happening in our district. Forest Hills has offered eight sessions, we originally offered four, I forgot to say this. Sandy Kaufman is the master trainer from Grant Us Hope, who is working with the school district, and she's leading the training with us along with Kelly Brazo and Betsy Ryan. It is free for families and anyone who wants to participate, which is very good. And again, we will continue to offer this, and we are expanding that towards our coachings, our coaches as well, including our advisors, which is another subject that I'd like to bring to your attention tonight. We have Lauren Amon, I'm sorry, who is in the audience with us. She is here probably as a guest or a colleague of Mike Glenn, who is working with the Anderson Collaborative. And Lauren has been working with us on plans to advance opportunities for our coaches that are working with kids to understand the delicate aspects of physical health and mental health and how all that comes together and how we can provide coaches with the tools necessary to be able to talk with students, to be able to assist students, and to be able to refer students who have not suicidal tendencies, but certainly have issues of anxiety, sometimes depression. A lot of anxiety in athletes because they are involved in so many things, in school, out of school, lot of pressure. And it shouldn't only be athletes, it should be any student. And so the idea over time is to expand this program that we are currently in the middle of putting together to a larger audience, which could, which will most likely include other students who are involved in after-school activities and how we can have those conversations with them. That's really good news, and I want to thank Mike, who is also with us this evening. He's been in to see us a few times, we're collaborating together, and we are expanding our relationships with several other individuals in our community. As late as today, we are aware of assistance that we are receiving from Mercy Hospital, from Children's Hospital, from Grant Us Hope, from Child Focus, from the University of Cincinnati, and also from the Hamilton County Department of Health. So we're collaborating with individuals who have a national footprint, understand national trends, and they too are partnering with the school district. So there'll be more to learn about that as time goes on. As far as wellness is concerned, I think we're turning the corner a bit with increasing our information and our education for our parents, for our students, our parents, our teachers, as well as our community. On the slide that's coming up now, this is related to wellness, and people have had great interest over the last few months about COVID. Well, this is a chart that came out, it's on the district's website. It is not up to date, it is an example for everyone who is here to see again how we record on a daily basis the number of COVID-positive cases of students within our school district. So back on 1/28/22, we had 118 students for that week that were identified as having COVID. The good news is there is a tremendous amount of reduction that's taking place, not only in our school, but in our ZIP codes and in Hamilton County, and thank goodness, across the state and the country. But that hasn't necessarily hit the hospitals yet. They are still dealing with the many aspects of COVID and individuals in ICUs and other entities. So if you know a nurse, you know a doctor, you know anybody who's in the hospital system, give them a high five, thank them for their work, because it hasn't slowed down just yet for them. So I'd like to go to the next slide to give people just an idea of where we've been and where we are over the last few weeks as we've talked about COVID. So back when we returned from the holiday break on 1/7/22, about 3.1% of the students in our school district had been identified as having confirmed COVID. That was 230 students at that time. At that time, we were also, with those 230 students, that represents about 1,500 contact traces. So we were inundated, much like the hospitals are right now, with people running everywhere trying to make sense of all of the COVID-related situations within our schools. Our board responded to that along with Hamilton County to try to make some adjustments with that. So not to bore everyone, but if you follow down the chart, you see we went from 230, the next week 259, the next week 231. The slide that I showed you a couple of moments ago was the 118 that you see in the middle of the chart here. And you can see we are moving down from as high as 3.5% of our student population to where we are now at 0.5% of our population last Friday when we exited the school. And today, we have seven students this week that have been identified. And obviously, we have three more days to go in our school week, but you can see the reductions that are taking place in our school system, and we're very happy about that. The next slide is also important, and we've talked about this all the time as we've navigated through COVID. as we've navigated through COVID. Do we have staff in the building capable of managing our schools when we are experiencing COVID? So a fill rate is the amount of individuals who are filling those classrooms. It doesn't mean that every classroom is covered, but it does mean that the individuals who are not in school, we have a fill rate of these percentages. And I do want to thank our Board of Education for dealing with that with compensation adjustments for our substitutes because it does help, and you can kind of see that reflected in the numbers. So back then on Monday, 2/7, last Monday, we were at a fill rate of 79.7%. And you can see on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday where we are, 100%. On Friday, 97.6. On that dubious Bengals Monday, we dropped to 86.3. And we are back up now at 88.1% just yesterday. So we have a healthy school as related to COVID. I'm not suggesting that it does not exist in our society, but we are on the mend, so to speak. We have staff in classes, we have kids in classes, we have the COVID numbers going down. We still need to be mindful, we need to be concerned about mitigation and distance and all those things. But these are positive signs that we're beginning to see. The next slide that's up there for you. This past Saturday, our Board of Education met for almost eight hours. And they did a phenomenal job of working through priorities for the upcoming school year. And so what you see up here, not for tonight, but further conversations down the road, are the areas that our Board of Education is prioritizing as we move forward into the upcoming school year. And I would tell you that they do not appear on this list in any order that is more important than the other. These are the topics that come that are aligned with our district's strategic vision. So when you take a look at aligned curriculum in our school district, this is aligned with preparing students for post-graduation success through rigorous learner-empowered approaches, core content, and real-world applications like you saw this evening. So we want to have our curriculum aligned so that all students have similar experiences. High-quality instruction, I think tonight, again, it's not only instruction in classrooms, but it's instruction across and opportunities across our entire school district. Mental health and wellness, you can tell from tonight, it is on the minds of our Board of Education. We continue to work together with our partners in the community and our Board of Education to identify best practices and the way we can continue to move forward to provide healthy environments for our students so they can be healthy, not only from a mental perspective, but from a physical health perspective. Finance and facility planning, you cannot be on the Board of Education if this is not on your mind. And most of the time, you are not a community member if you're not concerned about finance, fiscal responsibility, and efficiency. And so we've spent some time there, and we will continue to be working on those things. And then consistent and centralized communication. I've said it, and others have said it, we can do a better job with communication. You're beginning to hopefully see that in the wellness components that we are bringing forward and the way that we're including more people in what we know about kids and how we can expand the aspects of what we're doing on a daily basis with things like QPR and with other options that we have available to our teachers and expanding that to parents. So again, our Board of Education worked very hard. There'll be additional meetings forthcoming. But I felt like it would be appropriate to at least let people know that it was a long and productive and very, I felt, positive day this past Saturday. So thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Item 8.0, Public Commentary. We have four speakers this evening. First up will be Jesse Dipmore. And then second up will be Bill Armstrong.
I want to first and foremost just say thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. All I ask, and I won't take too much of your time, I just want to say, please hear us out and don't give up on the Redskins. That's all I'm asking. My whole entire family, including myself, went to Anderson and represented the Redskin mascot. Rock Vogel's tragic death reminded me how important the Redskin mascot meant to me and so many around this community. The Redskin mascot is a resource in this town. It's a symbol of hope, strength, and respect. My late mother always told me that if we keep taking resources out of the neighborhood and if we keep diluting the legacies and memories created by this mascot, there's going to be no school left standing. And look, I'm guilty of it too. I thought changing the mascot and being content was me doing it all for the right reasons, but I was wrong. I was wrong. Reinvesting in our community, reinvesting in this mascot is the right choice. Anderson deserves a chance of being great and getting back to know, getting back to what we've always known, getting back to who we are. I respectfully ask that you think long and hard before you cast your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dipmore. Bill Armstrong's up, and then Bryce Phillips.
Good evening, Distinguished Board. To follow up with what Jesse has brought up, we, the people, are requesting the Forest Hills School Board take into consideration following the points towards pride, honor, and respect of our students to have the Redskins put back. Number one, the people did not get the vote on such a big decision to change this logo. Two, money will be raised through private donations to place Redskins back. There's no direct cause to the budget of Forest Hills School District. The former Board failed to understand the total cost of what this change would be. So now we have the opportunity to turn back that decision, stop the bleeding, and any other futures monies donated would then go to mental health support. Thirdly, NAGA, Native American Guardian Association, who has the voice of the federally recognized tribal members in America, has stated that 90% of the tribal members have no problem using the Redskins as a logo, emblem, or icon. They do not ever want to be eradicated. They are willing to give us an official certification from tribal leaders across the nation. Calling a racist move is a direct result of the democratic narrative. And it is ironic that the critical race theory involves the same wording that we now are removing from the district. Redskin has never been used in a derogatory manner, as they stated. There's actually no proof that we could surmise. Mental health is a major problem in Forest Hills. At this time, anything that can be considered polarizing and hurtful to the students should stop immediately. We believe the former Board did not understand, therefore couldn't consider, the absolute negative impact and consequences of their decision to eradicate the Redskin logo. We are asking officially to reinstate the Redskin logo as our culture of pride, honor, and respect of our students here in Forest Hills School District. We also ask that they cease and desist the woke mob chaos and public doxing on social media as this perpetuates the already stressful situation. Thank you for your time and considerations. Sincerely, the concerned parents, students, both current and former, and certain staff of the Forest Hills community. I thank you for your time. Ms. Housefeld, we have this for you. And this is all documentation of what we have on.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. Next up is Bryce Phillips. And then our fourth speaker is Martha Veman.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Bryce Phillips. I'm a member of the Greater Cincinnati Native American Coalition. And I guess it's probably obvious that I'm here to say to urge the Board to not even consider the ridiculous notion of re-adopting an offensive racial slur as a mascot. It's one thing when that exists on inertia, but to decide to re-implement that in 2022 and spend your money on that, I mean, what kind of message does that send about this community? But there's a couple of things I want to clarify that I'm not here for. I'm not here to speak in defense of critical race theory. I actually think that the writings of Derrick Bell and Robin D'Angelo and people like that are frankly overly pessimistic about our ability to overcome racism. Not here to speak in defense of something called the 1619 Project. From what I hear, most historians agree that it's very inaccurate and probably shouldn't be taught in schools. We're just here for basic common sense. And you know, if this community wants to show the society and show the world that we don't need things like critical race theory, one of the ways you could do that is by permanently burying the offensive racial slur mascot and just burying that for all time. I can't believe we have to be here saying this. It's sad. And I don't understand this notion that it's some kind of legacy. You know, I'm of Pima descent. You know, one of my ancestors in my tribe, I mean, he's not directly, is Ira Hayes, who held up that flag at Iwo Jima. Like, so we're not some dead thing or some cartoon character. We're an integral part of this nation, and we deserve more respect than that than to have an explicit racial slur as the mascot for this school. And we've come and we've said it again and again and again. As far as this Native American Guardian Association, it's like five people that are getting paid money by big sports teams to say whatever they are told to say for a check. It's just tokenism. Overwhelming majority of Native people do not support this. And that's why we've come out here in numbers, to come and say, to really represent how our community feels about this matter going forward. Like I said, it's not partisan. It's not about who people vote for. I didn't vote for Joe Biden. I've been watching the Canadian truckers on the live stream, you know. It's not about, it's just about respect. And it's about having decent values of teaching respect to the next generation as Americans so that we don't need things like racial sensitivity training. Let's show that we can move ahead, that we're better than that as a society. Thanks, everyone, for your time, and have a good evening. And I urge you to not even explore a racist Redskin mascot.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Our final speaker is Martha Veman.
Good evening. I want to touch on two topics. At last month's meeting, I heard three Board members say they would not support mask mandates for preschool classrooms where children are not eligible for vaccines because they support individual freedom. They were, in fact, affirming the importance of individualism, which is one of the key tenets of democracy in America. In fact, it was almost 200 years ago that a book called Democracy in America by Alexis de Tocqueville noted this country's love affair with individualism. De Tocqueville also expressed hope that our focus on the self would be tempered by a commitment to community. De Tocqueville knew, as countless others have affirmed since, that our country is strongest when individualism is balanced with service to and even sacrifice for the greater good. Finding the balance between serving the self and serving the community is the continuing challenge of our nation. And I hope that our school board is up to that challenge. Next, I'd like to touch on the topic of mascots. We heard the connection between mental health and mascots. There's only one group in this nation where there is a clear connection between mental health and Native American-based mascots. That is Alaskan Native and Native American youth. Throughout the 21st century, this small population has had the highest suicide rate. And it is also the only group where sports mascots that represent them are listed as a contributing factor to poor self-esteem and increasing risk of suicide and suicidal ideation. Native American-themed mascots increase the risk of suicide among Native youth. GAB has, Greater Anderson Promotes piece, of which I'm a co-director, has a document that we will deliver to you tomorrow, prepared by experts on this topic. So before taking any action, please look to the experts to understand this issue. Please understand that the previous Board did not make an ill-considered decision. They did not make an ill-considered financial decision. This topic has been studied for 20 years in this community. We know what we're doing, and I believe that the Board has made the right decision. And bringing it up again will only increase the divisiveness. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Veman. Item 9.0, Business Operations. I'd just like to mention that with item 9.1, we are beginning our consent agenda recommendations through 13.1.
Thank you. I just have two items today on the agenda. 9.1 is the request to advertise for bid. As you know, before we go out to a bid project, we have to advertise them appropriately. And the process will be the advertisements will begin, if the Board approves, will begin tomorrow. The specifications for the asphalt projects will be available on the 18th. And we will do a walkthrough with all the contractors on the 24th before the bid opening and build submission on March 9. The second item today is a residency waiver for a senior student whose parents had to move out of the district during her senior year. And with that, by rule, if the Board adopts, we are able to allow that student to finish her senior year as a Forest Hills student. So those are my two items that respectfully request that the Board accept during the consent agenda.
Item 10.0, Human Resources.
Well, I'll say it because John didn't. Nothing clears out a room like a good old-fashioned biz ops report followed by HR. Well, as always, Mr. Broadwater's line, and I think I'll keep it, and I like it. Good evening, Board. We have a very straightforward HR agenda this evening for you to consider. Item A, we have a handful of resignations, both certified and classified. As with all resignations, we wish these individuals all the best in their futures and in their careers ahead. Item B, we have one leave of absence for your consideration this evening. And item C is appointment personnel that includes items D, E, F, G, and J. So we'll kind of work through those one at a time here. The first one being item D, there is a change of assignment listed for an individual, Megan Ashby, for your consideration. Item E, we have a number of appointments, which I always like to see because it means we're bringing some good people into the organization. So we have a couple classified staff coming in new and a couple who are coming off of the initial and contractual probationary status for your consideration. Item F is our special services appointments. Always nice to see a lot of people working in a lot of different capacities with our staff and with our students. And I'm trying to think there. I don't believe there's anything that I need to draw to your attention specifically. Item G is another list of new supplemental positions, appointments to work with students in various capacities, running club, basketball, or baseball, so on and so forth. And then we do often have, for your approval, our student teachers interns coming in to work with our staff as they complete their undergraduate degrees in anticipation of a future in education. Item I, a list of volunteers for recommendation for approval. And item J, always like to see those subs coming in listed there in those various capacities. Since the Board's regular meeting of January 26th this year, our staffing is at 799.27, as in the exhibit. And so unless there are questions, Superintendent recommends that the Board approve the personnel items as listed.
No questions? Thank you. Thank you. Item 11.0, Teaching and Learning Curriculum.
Well, good evening. I would like to bring before the board the outdoor education program for 2122, which is Camp Kern. This is a three-day, two-night overnight field trip for May 2nd through the 4th for Maddox and Sherwood Elementary, May 4th through the 6th for Aaron Summit Elementary, May 11th through the 13th for Mercer and Wilson Elementary, and this would be for all 5th graders in our school district and all six elementary schools. This takes a great amount of planning, so that's why we're putting it for you today so we can start to plan those excursions with our directors of Camp Kern. There is a cost of $150 per student, which includes transportation, meals, accommodations, and the activities that will take place in Camp Kern. There are full and partial scholarships available for students that need financial assistance through the building level. It is recommended by the superintendent that the board approve our outdoor education program for the 2122 school year.
No questions? Thank you, Mr. Buck.
While Bob's heading back, I want to thank all the principals, Mr. Buck, also Kim Pence. This is a great opportunity for our students and I'm glad to see it's back. Another indication that COVID is moving out of our world and we're trying to get back to some normalcy. This is a fantastic opportunity and a partnership we have to make good things happen for kids. So thank you, Bob. I appreciate it.
Item 12.0, Teaching and Learning Student Services.
Thank you for clearing the room, Mr. Fellows. Teaching and Learning has two items, 12.1 and 12.2. The first is an overnight trip by our DECA students, which are marketing students. 11th and 12th graders and four chaperones plan to travel to Columbus for the DECA State Conference on March 11th and 12th, which is a Friday and Saturday. There's a $100 student cost to this trip, which includes, and I've listed in the agenda, their lodging, registration, meal, and Great Oaks will be providing the transportation. This is a satellite affiliate with the Great Oaks, this particular, these particular courses. Item 12.2 is an agreement with Hamilton County Developmental Disability Services for the 2223 school year. And this agreement is required by Hamilton County DDS to provide students, services to students for districts in Hamilton County for the 2222 school, 2223 school year. It is for one year and they ask for each district to inform them of their intent to continue services each and every year for students in grades K to 12. And this is for students with very, very intensive needs, special education students, and the placements are determined by the IEP team. At this time and for many years up to this time, we have not had a student placed at Bobby B Fairfax School. We have been serving our students in the school district who have those intense needs. But again, we have to, we plan to bring this to your attention every year. The superintendent recommends that the board approve items 12.1 and 12.2 as noted in the
Thank you. Item 13.0, Treasures Report.
The Treasures Monthly Report begins with the donations received over the month of January. Donations totaled $17,824 over the last month. Moving on to item 13.1B, this is the cash activity statement, which presents all district funds. It shows the beginning balance at July 1st, which was the beginning of our fiscal year. It also shows fiscal year revenues to date, fiscal year expenditures to date, and the last column of numbers you see there is the cash balance as of January 31st. Item C presents the general fund, our five-year forecast funds. It presents the receipts for the month and the fiscal year to date ended January 21st. And as you can see, January, as typical, was a high cash flow month. We wish all months brought in as much as the month of January. However, during the month of January, we received just over $5.4 million as an advance on our first half 2022 real estate collections. In addition, the state continues to implement the new school funding model and as a true-up for the first few months of the year, the district received just under $3.7 million just to catch up from the previous months on implementation. And again, wouldn't it be nice if we received that every month? Moving on to items D and E, that presents the expenditures in the general fund, again, for the month and the fiscal year to date ended January 31st. As you hear me say every month, expenditures are very stable, so we would expect 1/12 of our annual budget to be spent every month. And at the end of January, with 58% of our fiscal year complete, we have spent 57.6 of our appropriations. So again, spending tracking right where we would expect it to be in this fiscal year. The January 31st bank reconciliations and investments are presented in Agenda Items 13.1 F and G and appropriation adjustment detail is in Agenda Item 13.1H. These appropriations are adjusted due to actual revenues either exceeding or falling short what was originally expected. So we want to adjust our spending authority to match those revenues. I respectfully request that the board approve items 13.1A through 13.1H as part of the consent motion, beginning with Agenda Item 9.1.
Make a motion to approve items 9.1A through 13.1H.
Linda made it, Katie seconded it.
Mrs. Hausfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Mrs. Jonas?
Yes.
Dr. Rasmussen?
Item 14.0, Board Discussion.
I can start if you guys don't care.
Sounds good.
I just wanted to start by saying a big thank you to all of our teachers and our staff, administration, janitors, bus drivers, everybody. Thank you so much for going above and beyond for our students and making sure every day that they're able to learn. I sincerely thank you for that. It's been a real learning process these last 47 days, so I wanted to especially say thank you to Scott, Elena, and administration for answering all of my questions. I know I've been asking a lot, so thank you for that. Congratulations to Mr. Foley and his hard work to be able to graduate early. I think that's amazing, so congratulations on that. And I'm excited for Camp Kern. I'm glad we're able to start our outdoor educational programs again. I think that's really great for our students, so I hope everybody has a good time and they get to enjoy the activities, so thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I feel like we should clap off.
Okay, item 15.0, Reports to the Board of Education.
Mrs. Hausfeld, I have a report for you for 15-1. If you're ready for that.
I'm ready, yep.
The Economic Development Committee meeting did occur. I was unable to be there in person, but I do have notes from the meeting that were presented to me. It was the first meeting of the year and so there was a lot of, there were a lot of introductions in that meeting and people getting to know each other. They did discuss real estate update on new neighborhoods within our school system and monitoring that closely and the relationship with the Economic Development Committee. And us, and me personally being a part of that, it's nice to hear what's going on and how that impacts our schools. And I can tell you that the committee is extremely mindful of the school district, everyone from the youth in our school to the senior citizens and all of us in between in trying to provide the best community possible. So it's always fun to hear what the planning looks like and how they're moving forward with that. They did create subcommittees for key sites within our community to be able to keep an eye on those for potential development and opportunities on those sites. They talked about Kellogg Avenue and the opportunities that exist in our, in Anderson Township to offer opportunity on the Kellogg Avenue sort of corridor as an entrance into our community. And they also did talk about the pool project that we have been discussing and they are more than happy to coordinate and assist as needed to try to help the school district or partner with the school district, probably better stated, to try to design some methodology to deal with those resources within our community. And the next meeting will be on March 22nd. So I'd like to thank Amy Richardson. She's the president of the Economic Development Committee and glad she's there and I look forward to continue to work. I see you here tonight.
Thank you, Scott. Next item is 15.2, Finance Committee Report.
We'll meet on the 24th.
Item 15.3, Human Resources Committee Report.
We are meeting on the 23rd.
15.4, Legislative Liaison Report. Nothing to report on legislative issues. 15.5, Policy Committee Report. We have not met yet, but we are scheduling a meeting for next week. The last set of policy updates were in December, so I think the next expected is in March, 15.6, Safety Committee Report.
We have not met yet.
There are big things going on though in that area, I can tell you. So that's going to be an exciting committee meeting. It's a very positive one that's coming up. And John, you won't clear the room that day. There's a lot of people that are going to be participating, so that's good news for the district.
15.7, Teaching and Learning Committee.
We met last month. I reported on that at the last meeting. There's nothing's news happened.
Thank you. 15.8, Technology and Facilities Committee.
We met last month as well. We went over that in the previous board meeting. We got, we need to schedule another meeting though.
Item 15.9, Forest Hills Foundation Report.
Good evening. Did anybody else leave the room? Rob, it's totally you. It's only you. Good evening. My name is Stacy Gillard and I'm the executive director of the Forest Hills Foundation. At the last board meeting, I know that I shared some information about our upcoming event, the Forest Hills 5K. We're back in person, which is awesome, and I would just like to point out, who is ready to have some fun? Because I feel like we need fun and bring this community together for an outstanding event around promoting physical health. For all you joggers, runners, we're going to hear from a couple of them in just a second, as well as also May is Mental, if you want to go to the next slide, May is Mental Health Awareness Month. And so we are also going to really focus in on creating awareness. I was really glad to see that out of the board priorities and had a good conversation with Mr. Pebbles today, that part of mental wellness is also understanding and having information and resources. And so we are at the 5K this year, going to have several organizations there that will actually be able to share resources with parents, community members, kids, that we have so many great organizations that are right here in Anderson that do such great work. So we're excited about that. So save the date, Saturday, May 14th. Part of me is like, May seems like a long time away and then you're like, and it's here. So, but I have two awesome people with me tonight, so I'm not going to talk any longer. This year, we looked at having what we're calling Race Ambassadors. And so what that means is that they are full in, they're ready to commit to participating, sharing information about the 5K as well as helping fundraise for the event too. So I'm going to first turn it over to Zoe and then Josh.
Hi, I'm Zoe. I'm a junior at Anderson. I'm part of Hope Squad. I play lacrosse. I am really involved and, but the thing that really spoke to me for this 5K was the mental health aspect. It's really important for me. It's always been a part of my life and I think it's important to get information out to people.
Hi, my name's Joshua Owens. When the opportunity to be a Race Ambassador for the Forest Hills 5K came up, I said, yes, I'm going to do this. I didn't take a second to think about it because the race means so much to me. I'm so passionate about this race. When I was 28 years old, I was diagnosed with heart failure and I, you know, lost the ability to do anything on my own. I had to depend on somebody else to do everything. I couldn't get out of a chair on my own, couldn't go to the kitchen to get a glass of water on my own. I took several years to kind of rebuild my health and I did this through like making small goals, like take extra couple steps to get across the room, take a couple extra steps to the mailbox, maybe next month I'll try to get to the neighbor's mailbox. And I eventually set a goal, like I'm going to do a 5K. I chose the Forest Hills 5K because, you know, it's local, I see the signs for it all over the place and I did that in 2018. It wasn't about running it, it was just get to the end of this race however I could. But I wanted to do it like healthy and happy so I could celebrate at the end. I did this race and loved it. There's, there are kids from all of the elementary schools, there are so many parents there. We had, I think, marching band people one year, there were cheerleaders one year. It's fabulous. Came home from that race and I told my wife, like, who was there to support me, but I said, I have to be a runner. I don't know what I need to do to do this, but I am going to be a runner and it's because of that race. So I've done it. This is, this year's going to be my fifth year doing it in a row. The last two years, really boring. No one's been there. I've gotten up, I did them, same race day, same course, same weekend. I did them by myself, 3:00 in the morning, so I don't get hit by cars. But I'm, you know, I'm just so passionate about this race. So I know this is not live streamed today, but hopefully when people watch this, everyone watching it, sign up, come out, come do it, it's great. Say hi to me, you know, I just, I love the race. So thank you, I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Josh, I had the pleasure of hearing your speech at the foundation meeting the other night and it has impacted me. And again, this evening, it's an impactful story. And it's one of, it's just, it's excellence at its best. And it is another person who has been touched by the Forest Hills School District, who now is giving back and leading something that is so important. It was important to you and it's important to our community and it certainly adds value. And as well, I certainly thank you for, for helping us out with this. Appreciate it so much. Thank you.
Can I say one more?
Yeah, you sure can.
One more thing I forgot to say. So I'm a parent in the district. I have five kids. They've all gone through the district, Summit, Nagel, Anderson. I went to Anderson, my wife went to Anderson. So just so you guys know, like, I'm a part of the community, I've been here for a long time, so, you know, thank you.
Awesome, yeah. Well, and just the last thing I want to share is, I think this is another great example of how we continue to bring people together, right? I think people are inspired in different ways. I think it's important for our community and for the foundation to highlight this event of how we bring people together as well as promote physical health as well as mental health. So thanks to Zoe and Josh, we have about 12 other staff members, parents, and students that have signed on to be Race Ambassadors. So if you go to the next slide, everything is going to be sent out tomorrow, as Nicole Whiting sits in the back, who's in charge of like the website and is freaking out. No, I'm kidding. But we're really excited, so everything will kick off tomorrow. If you have any questions, let us know. Also, Josh will be able to share his story on social media about what he's doing and so we're going to be really intentional about the ambassadors and their kind of journey. so we're going to be really intentional about the ambassadors and their kind of journey and promoting that till May 14th. So thank you for all you do, for our community, for our district, and we're really excited to see you at May 14th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, item 15.10, Forest Hills Teachers Association. They are not presenting this evening. Item 16.0, Executive Session. There will be no executive session this evening. And item 17.0, Adjournment. The next regular board meeting will be March 16th, 2022. I make a motion to adjourn the regular meeting of the Forest Hills Board of Education.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Mrs. Jonas?
Yes.
Dr. Rasmussen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hosfeld?
Yes. There we go.